Good evening. Welcome to the Proceedings of the Grand Rapids Board of Education. It is Tuesday, January 21st. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Ross, can you please take the roll?
Ms. Slade.
Present.
Mr. Ross, present. Dr. Reynolds excused. Mr. O'Connor. Pastor Moody.
Present.
Reverend Mathias.
Present.
Mr. Legrand. Dr. Baker.
Here.
President Faub.
Present.
So we do have a quorum of six.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as written? Actually, I need somebody to make a motion to add a report from the Achievement Committee.
Make a motion to add a report from the Achievement Committee.
I support.
Approval of the agenda with that addition? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, we have an agenda. Our superintendent is on her listening tour this evening, and I am guessing whoever scheduled that forgot that we have a Tuesday meeting after MLK Day. In honor of MLK Day, we hold it the following day. So in her stead is Ms. Carolyn Evans. And please to have you here.
Thank you, thank you so much. Dr. Faub, members of the board, I'd like to ask Maggie Malone, our supervisor of Fine Arts, to come forward, and she is going to in turn introduce our schools and students that participated in our greeting card contest.
Thank you, Mrs. Evans, Dr. Faub, and members of the board. I can't tell you how excited it is to be here to recognize some of our amazing students and amazing art teachers. This year, we did a holiday card for the Superintendent and Board of Education, as I know you're aware. We were excited to have the opportunity to include all of our schools in this, and we have our five finalists that were selected with their pieces today. So with no further ado, I would like to invite the following students to come up with their teachers, and they have their pieces, and we're gonna let you see what all the super exciting stuff is all about. So we have Josie Ippe. She is a student at Coit Creative Arts Academy. Her art teacher is Ms. Karen Brady, and the principal is Ms. Barb Reebe. So we'll have them come up with their piece. We also have from KEC Beltline, Serena Trice. Her piece is Flowers. Her art teacher is Ms. Karen Haight, and their principal is Mr. Joel Copley. We have from Martin Luther King Leadership Academy, Amaya Jones. Her piece is entitled Snowman. Her art teacher is Ms. Leslie Sharuff, and their principal is Ms. Tricia Mathis. And then from North Park Montessori, we have Anella Berry. Her piece is Candle, and her art teacher is Ms. Lucia Zapata, and their principal is Ms. Robin Sorge. And finally, from Sherwood Park, we have Danae James. Her piece is entitled Trees. Her art teacher is Ms. Lori Rubin, and their principal is Ms. Arnetta Thompson. We are just very grateful to have this opportunity, and I have them face this way in case anybody wanted to get pictures. This is your big moment. And then, if everybody is good with the pictures, we would like to have them be recognized with applause and have them have the opportunity to get to shake everybody's hand. So thank you, we're so proud of you guys. Turn around this way, so we can see you.
Beautiful, beautiful.
That was very nice. Thank you so much.
Wonderful job.
Thanks for your work.
That's really...
Thank you.
Really good.
Good job. Love that.
I like that one. This is absolutely gorgeous.
Thanks for your work.
I would buy this.
I just have to ask him. All right. Next on the agenda is our report from our student reps, and I'm just gonna complain, I forgot your last name.
Jones.
Jones, of course, of course, I know that. All right, Mr. Jones, it's your moment on the agenda.
Today, we got to go to Gordon Foods, where I took a little basically survey, a survey kind of issue where they asked us questions about how can they help us basically fill us up in class instead of throwing our food away. We also, they asked us questions, how can they help with our cafeteria? Like, how can we, how can they basically make us a comfortable place and area? I also got to talk to Ms. Denise Fozzie. She wanted me to contact with Ottawa Air Union to basically go with her groups of people they talked to on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, no, Thursdays and Wednesdays. And then I will be also taking time off of school and going to meet with their schools and basically bringing information from their schools and bring it back here. I also was gonna talk to Mr. McGee, one of our assistant principals at Innovation Central, about the hip-hop opportunity, and also talk about a suggestion box that I put forth earlier.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. My apologies momentarily for getting your name.
It's okay.
Next on the agenda is public comment on board agenda items. Do we have any public comment?
No ma'am, we do not.
Thank you. Next is the secretary's report. Mr. Ross?
I just want to make you guys aware of an opportunity through KISD. There's the invitation to participate along with Ferris State University President David Isler to hear a presentation on creating successful futures for students and building strong K-16 partnerships. This event will take place on Tuesday, February 11th. There's a small social gathering that begins at 6:30, dinner at 7:00, and the presentation at 7:45. This is gonna take place at 17 Pearl Street at the Woodbridge North Ferris Building. Cost is $15. Dinner will be provided by Ferris State. And so anyone interested, please RSVP with Ms. Anderson by February 3rd. Again, that date is February 11th at 6:30 PM.
Thank you. All right, great.
That's Woodbridge in Ferris.
Yes, in the Ferris building.
Initial, not a direction.
Next on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
Well, while John is coming, I believe that this month is Board Member's Appreciation Month. And while John's... But I would just like to say, while he is being seated, that if in the event I would have to take John's place, I think it would be very easy to say, to express our appreciation for your leadership in the district and to thank you for being the kind of leaders that lead with such integrity that we are all very proud that you've taken up these positions and of the work that you're doing on behalf of students. So I just thought I'd sneak that in before John sits down, but I think anybody on Cabinet would agree and would be able to speak on a dime about your leadership in this district and community. So thank you so much for all that you do.
Bringing stability to our district.
And I'd really echo, before I read this resolution, I would kinda also echo it, and on behalf of Superintendent Weatherall Neal and our entire leadership team, we think we've got the best school board in the state. And when we were at the State Board of Education just over a week ago, I think that was also echoed in their comments, while they certainly zeroed some of their praise in on Teresa because she was the presenter. That work, the work in the direction of this district is residing amongst these nine individuals, and you all are all part of the direction of the district, the leadership, the growth, the success. And so just thank you again. Governor Snyder has declared observance. January 2014 is the School Board Member Recognition Month. And whereas Grand Rapids School Board members represent a tremendous source as local decision-makers who consistently respond to the needs of their community; and whereas Grand Rapids Public School Board members represent the voice of this community in serving the interests of our schoolchildren and preparing them for the future; and whereas Grand Rapids Public School Board members continually strive for improvement and progress in education with an understanding of the need for commitment to change and growth; and whereas the men and women elected by the people as members of Grand Rapids Public School Board deserve recognition for countless hours of public service for public education in our community; therefore, be it resolved that I, Teresa Weatherall Neal, Superintendent of the Grand Rapids Public Schools, do hereby declare January 2014 as School Board Member Recognition Month in the Grand Rapids Public Schools. I commend the members of the Grand Rapids School Board for their dedication, service to the children of this community, and urge all citizens to join me in demonstrating gratitude to these outstanding individuals. Be it further resolved that the student representatives to the board also be recognized for their dedication and service to the board in providing input on a wide variety of student issues in the district; be it further resolved that this resolution be printed in the proceedings of the board and a copy be placed on file. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we've added a report from the Achievement Committee. Dr. Baker, if you would like to share with the rest of the board what occurred in your committee this month?
Yes, we met last week. And the major report was on chronic absenteeism. I would encourage all of the board to look at the report. It's very important, very stark. It's a, the superintendent has considered that to be one of her primary challenges for her own evaluation this year. And so, understanding the data that's there and as well as the district's response. And the district's response has been to include partners from the community. And very much the discussion last week was around the community response and our efforts to engage the community and especially some very important community partners that have been a part of helping with chronic, you know, lowering chronic absenteeism. Particularly a problem at the high school level, but as the data suggests and as our discussion suggests, we had a great lesson on the roots of absenteeism. That these are habits that are learned early and end up feeding to very difficult academic problems later. Chronic absenteeism is defined as missing more than 10% or more. Stop me if I ever am wrong, Carolyn. 10% or more, and that sounds like a lot, but that's a couple days a month. And so, when a couple days a month means chronic absenteeism and means some serious academic problems. And if you can imagine being a teacher in a classroom where lots of kids are missing a couple days a month, you have some classroom holes that lead to problems. And so it's very important for us all as a community, the parents. A lot of the efforts that were discussed were efforts to educate the parents about this problem and also myths associated, and also engage the community. So it's a great discussion. We should all become experts on, you know, what's happening around this issue. And so, we also discussed the ongoing state and oversight of the priority schools and as usual, and things seem to be going well and proceeding along. And all of that data is online.
Dr. Baker, questions for him?
Not questions, but I would, I would suggest that one of the things that we ought to focus on, and I'm not part of the committee, but one of the things that as a board we ought to be concerned about is that this not shift into a cycle of punitive responses. And that's, you know, I think it's very easy to have a get tough on crime response to chronic absenteeism and have that essentially then turn into giving a bunch of kids criminal records for truancy rather than addressing the roots of the problem. And I'm not suggesting that anyone on the board would move that way, but I think that there are social forces that might easily come and say, hey, we've got the solution for you. We'll just get more truancy officers and we'll get more probation officers to make juvenile cases. And I don't think anybody wants that, but I think that we've always got to be careful when we have these discussions that we not veer off course because our ultimate objective obviously is to get the kids to come back to school and succeed.
I think as an observer to the committee, what I was impressed with among the many multi-pronged efforts addressing the absenteeism was the community part, the partnership with community partners to try to identify barriers and chronic barriers rather than recognizing it as a character issue or a singular issue, and that way, you know, eliminating them and doing it quite a systemic fashion.
Right, yeah, very much so.
So there was some emphasis that I thought was important, that it really starts right away, kindergarten, first grade, that that's where you really need to get on it right away because we talk about it's big at high school level, but that starts here. And so we really need to deal with our parents and our community to get these kids to school.
And again, this, we could certainly talk about it in a work session, but just so the rest of the board knows, the governor has tried to create a school justice partnership, and it's not frankly, at this point, very clear what authority, if anything, that group has to do anything, but it's meeting, and I've been attending their meetings as part of my work in the Restorative Justice Coalition, not as a board member, but it might well be useful to have a board member representative there. I mean, might well be very useful to have someone there officially in that capacity so that we can make sure that the educational aspect of this doesn't get lost in the other agendas.
Other questions for Dr. Baker, the other committee members?
I think too, just to go along with what you're saying with the attendance challenge, and if you go to a lot of the schools, you'll see them posting in percentages what's going on. And I think that's real helpful for a lot of parents. It's like, what is that? And they're really able to talk about the challenges, and they have it, you know, the K through 5th grade, you'll see that data there. And again, that's a teaching point, opportunity for us with parents to be able to say, this is really important, so kudos.
My general sense is this issue across the social economic spectrum, I think parents are often unaware of how, what a serious indicator that is for future failure with what you said, perhaps two absences a month. So I think broader awareness is really important.
Just one final, I think this addresses a lot. I encourage people to spend some time with the report online. I think that you'll be impressed. I think that all of the discussion that's brought up, questions, relate to that, the efforts that the staff is doing to promote this issue and also the community. And so, I would really encourage people to spend some time with that as well. I think it's pretty impressive. And also, there's a reflection, not just on the role of the parents or the community, but also on us, you know, and identifying possible barriers that we may be creating and have to alleviate, so.
You know, I'd like to go to Mr. Jones here and put a small task of sorts. Of course, K through 8, K through 5 in particular, there are probably some things that promote absenteeism that's beyond a child's control. But at the high school level, you know, there's a certain level of autonomy. And if you could, next time you're engaging with some of your peers, just fish that out a little bit if you could. And what are some of the things that at the high school level those students will say may promote absenteeism at the 9th through 12th grade level? And what could the district as an organization do to, you know, alleviate some of those things? Just, you know, any anecdotal information you bring back would be good.
Excellent charge, Mr. Ross. You good with that?
Yes, I am.
All right. Any other questions? Moving on, we have a second reading of slight change to our Policy 1150, board officers. Do you have a motion to accept this second reading?
Some votes.
Support?
Support.
Any discussion?
Yeah, and I guess I want to make a slight apology to my colleagues, but since this is a second reading, but I, having lived with this language a little bit, I'm actually pretty unhappy with the description of specifically the role of board members. I think there's a good description of the roles and responsibilities of the President and Vice President, but the roles of officers, and I'm referring to, I think it's, these are maybe paginated, so it may be 1150-4, but essentially, it looks to me as though the descriptions of the board officers are really dominated by sort of scolding language and descriptions of what people shouldn't do rather than what we should do. So there's nothing in there that says, for example, that we ought to, you know, direct policy and engage in curriculum discussions, be careful about the finances of the district. There is language that says that we have to respect the authority of the President. Well, we're all elected officials, we all have one vote. I'm not sure exactly what that means. We're not, we don't have to defer to Dr. Faub or anybody else we elected as President. We have to, it's true that her role, for example, speaking for the board is a useful role. And if that, if respecting her authority means we don't go off and say, I represent the board of Grand Rapids Public Schools, fine. But I'm not sure the scold is necessary. And then, not bypass the authority of the President. Well, again, I'm not sure a scold is necessary to be built in if none of us have done any of this. I think it'd be much more effective if this language was positive, not negative. And if the thrust of the description was positive, not negative. And then, another one is not undermine the leadership of the President and only take those actions that are congruent with policy. Well, again, I don't find, I don't find that very useful as language to include. I'd much rather have positive descriptions of what we ought to be doing rather than something that looks sort of like it's building up, you know, El Presidente's authority. Well, that's just a strange dynamic, I think.
Point taken. When we put this forward, it was to clean up the date, pure and simple. And I'm wondering whether, you know, we're going to embark on Carver training and whether we do it through Carver. You know, I think a discussion is in order on how we review and perhaps revise our entire body of policies in some form of efficient manner. So...
I have one too, just a minor.
Okay. Well, I would like to suggest that perhaps we pass a second reading at this time to change the date with the, you know, acknowledging your concern, which I share personally, and that these policies be revisited in a more substantive fashion later this month.
Well...
And this is a small one, but I think it's indicative. We still have in here, board's executive committee, which we do not have.
Okay, that's just incorrect.
And that's incorrect, but it's an important piece, that we used to have an executive committee, but we made sure that that is not just four people up here, that this is the entire board kind of going along with your points.
Thank you both for reading this. Appreciate that.
So what's the need to do to take action here, then?
We don't, we can send this back for another reading, so.
Well, I, yeah, I was gonna suggest unless we had any dates because I don't want to be seen as endorsing, this board endorsing the language here. So it becomes, you know, January 2014 instead of June 2009, and those dates mean something. And so, it would be an endorsement of these principles if we vote on it today.
So John, help me out with Robert's rules at this point. If we want to table this for a work session, or...
Yeah, you want to lay it on the, withdraw the motion if you'd like, and we can just have a discussion of it, or we can lay it on the floor to take action at a later time, or...
They say take action at a later time.
It's fine.
I'd just move to postpone the Policy 1150 to a date to be determined at a work session.
Support for that?
Support.
Do we have to call a vote? Call the vote.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Legrand?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Pastor Moody?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Ross, yes. Ms. Slade?
Yes.
President Faub?
Yes.
Motion to postpone passes 8-0.
Yeah, I want to thank Mr. Legrand and Ms. Slade for doing a more careful reading of the policy. Next on the agenda is the consent. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda grouping?
Some votes.
Support?
Support.
Please call the vote.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Legrand?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Pastor Moody?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Ross, yes. Ms. Slade?
Yes.
President Faub?
Yes.
Consent agenda passes 8-0.
We have no discussion items. Do we have public comment?
We do not.
Any further comments?
No.
Board member comments, Ms. Slade?
Just think it's good that we're doing a nice shirt so people can go home and get warm. Because it's gonna be another cold spell coming at us. That's all I have.
Mr. O'Connor?
Just a quick, I want to say thank you and a little promotion for Friends of Grand Rapids Parks. They recently constructed three ice rinks in various, Wilcox Park, Cherry Park, and Richmond Park in our neighborhoods. You know, we've historically had close to 20 ice rinks 20 years ago throughout the city so children and adults had an opportunity to enjoy our green space in the winter. And those went away. You can only, until recently, skate at Rosa Parks. So just want to encourage people to get out and use those. And then, at Richmond Park, Winter West will kick off this weekend. And next weekend will be a crazy cardboard sled competition, which GRPS being a great sponsor to get kids out and enjoy winter, so.
Mr. Legrand?
Well, I grew up in Canada, so I'm all in favor of pickup games of hockey. I wanted to say my, I was a little, I was a little itchy with the board member appreciation because frankly, we get appreciated all the time. You know, we go to fundraising parties for somebody and everyone says, yay, look, there's a board member here. Or, you know, we go to the mayor's city address and someone says, yay, look, the board members are here. I really, really don't like Boss's Day for exactly the same reason. Secretaries tend to be underappreciated. Bosses call the shots. So I, I really think that, my mom, who's a teacher, pointed out to me that my central role on this board is to be a cheerleader for teachers. So thank you to all the teachers who are out there in TV land because you're the guys doing the heavy lifting. We're, we get more credit probably than we deserve, and you get a whole lot less. So thanks.
Reverend Mathias?
If you haven't been to any of the speaking tours that our superintendent is in, as board members, I really encourage us to do that and certainly for the public to go out. For one, she really is listening. Two, good discussions that parents and staff, by the way, she does have a listening tour for staff, and staff do come out and really are able to voice their opinions as well and concerns and so forth. So it's just a win-win all the way around to really be able to know that someone's listening and then, that then, you know, there's a list, a laundry list of things that really need to continue to work on as we're really now implementing the changes and going forward. So just want to encourage the public to really go out there and go to these listening tours, but also for us as board members to be at least, you know, in the audience and listening to what our folks are saying, so.
Pastor Moody?
Hey, I want to give kudos to the young artists who did these cards. And I really would like to know, are there any for sale? I think I would be happy to purchase one, or all of them. They hang on my wall. I do collect art, and these are some great, great, great pictures. Piece of artwork, rather. So I want to give kudos to the children and to the art teachers and keep up the good work. Maybe we'll have some more Paul Collins coming out of Grand Rapids.
Dr. Baker?
Well, at the risk of sounding arrogant, I'm gonna take issue with my colleague David Legrand.
It's fine with you all along, Tony, it's fine.
I am quite proud of the board that I'm on. And I think that we deserve to be given credit for the work that it's taken to get here. And I say that not really jokingly at all because I think that it takes a lot of work, and a lot of boards are good work. And so, I think that it's really amazing, the partnership that we now have with the staff, the cabinet, the teachers, with the staff, the cabinet, the teachers, and so it feels very much a part of it. So I think that that's work that wasn't, those are words that weren't always true, and so I think that they're true now. And I think that we all deserve to, to hear the praise and make sure it stays that way. And I guess it's another way of saying that I'm not thanked enough, but I still like it. So, that's all.
Mr. Ross?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
I just have a couple items of business. I've made the committee assignments, gave them to Julie. Did not know Ms. Anderson was not at work today, so you should get them tomorrow. I can forward them. I was trying to honor the non-paper thing, so I didn't print them out. And the other is at the next meeting. Three of us will not be in attendance. Mr. O'Connor and Pastor Moody and myself will be attending the FRN conference in Washington, DC, and we will be in Ms. Slate's capable hands. So stay warm and meeting adjourned.